Yes, believe we have quorum. I'm not right now seeing Mr. Kuzno in the attendees. So he may be a late arriver.
Okay, we'll begin. I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Zerzeki, can you please call role for the record?
Yes, Ms. Chick is absent with notice. Mr. Kuzno has not come on yet. Mr. Dyer?
Present.
Mr. Quinto?
Present.
Ms. Fonte?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
And Mr. Zerzeki here. So we do have a quorum.
Thank you. I make a motion. We adopt the agenda.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Lippins will go to call the public and request the people have three minutes and please state their name and address.
Thank you, Chair. We will go to the first call of the public. Members of the public, if you'd like to address the commission, you can at this time. We'll ask you to state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes. I'll note if you are an applicant or have a case on the agenda tonight, we'll also provide you an opportunity to speak your case when that case arrives. Additionally, we have two public hearings tonight. So if you're in the audience as a member of the public to speak on either our recommendation to approve approval conditions or deny the KETI LLC request for conditional use or approve approval of the conditions or deny the request for rezoning of the Whitmore Lake Road property on the agenda. You can also wait until those public hearings are opened to make comments. So I, at this time, do not see any members of the public with their hand raised. Just gonna say again, if you're on the phone and you would like to raise your hands, you can do so by pressing star six. And if you are participating via the Zoom app on a computer or on a mobile device, you can raise your hand by pressing the button that says raise your hand. And I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand at this time, Chair. There is a second call of the public at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Zerzeki, I see Mr. Kuzno's here. Now, you can make note. And so there's no, no one spoke at call the public, so there should be no clarification from commissioner. So everyone received the correspondence in the packet, Michigan Pure Green Future Development Agreement. We will go to public hearings now. Before we begin, I'll explain briefly for the public how it goes. I will call on the planner to present a summary of the report. We will call on the applicant to present a statement regarding their request and request that they limit it to five minutes. We will call on those from the public that support or oppose the request. And anyone wishing to speak about that can have three minute time limit. And if there's any questions at the discretion of the Chair, we can ask questions to the planning consultant or the applicant. So with that, I'll make motion. We open public hearing for case JPC 20014.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions on that? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. And I'll describe the cases to recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of KETI LLC, vacant East North Territorial Road, Whitmore Lake, Michigan, for a conditional use for recreational grow permit, medical grow permit and processor permit. The parcel numbers are B 022040004, B 0229100002, B 0229100004, and B 0229100005. And those are zoned RTM Research Technology Manufacturing District. With that, we will go to Mr. Lippins.
Paul, you're muted.
Thank you, Cecilia. Thank you, Commission, as well for a public hearing this evening. We have the KETI Grow and Processing Facility. This is currently the only applicant that we have in the township for growing and processing of medical and recreational marijuana. It is a large facility that is also part of a larger plan to develop an industrial park. So we did not place the private road on the agenda this evening, but there is a private road associated with this development. There will be additional development sites that are not included at this time for development, but the construction of the private road would certainly, in the future, would open up those sites for new industrial developments as well. But even as part of the application, we won't be reviewing any submittals for the other lots. So we're looking at the lot that will be created specifically for this grow facility. At this time, we're gonna hold a public hearing to allow members of the public to speak. We also do have the petitioner in the audience, Keishan, who is also the commission will know him. He also has a pending application for a recreational and provisioning center. And it's the one located at the Barber Downs across the street. So I am gonna let Keish speak tonight. You know, well, I'll maybe field more questions on the conditional use following Keish's presentation on his vision for the development of this facility. So, Keish, I'm gonna promote you to panelist. And you can also let me know if there are any other members from your team here this evening to speak with Planning Commission. Just trying to see if that worked. I think I promoted Keish. Do I have him on the panel now? Going back. Oh, he's back in the audience. Sometimes people leave the meeting and they have to rejoin as a panelist. So, okay. It's time. It looks like it worked. Keish, are you there?
Yeah, I think one of my colleagues, Alex Park, is also in the audience. If you could promote him.
Oh, yeah. I see Alex. Great. I'm gonna promote Alex. Great.
Are you guys able to see my screen?
I can see it. Can everyone see the presentation? So, Keish, I believe Chair just confirmed, are we allowing 10 minutes for the presentation or five?
If, if we could keep it to five, because we also have, we'll be discussing the matter also. This is just a basic for the public hearing.
Yep, no problem.
Great.
All right. Thank you, Planning Commissioners, for the opportunity here to speak. My name is Keishen Satarya, also known by my nickname, Keish. I'll be here to talk to you guys about the KETI facility and the project. KETIs are Grow and Processing Facility. That's gonna be located in a newly developed business park on North Territorial Road. The star kinda shows on the left-hand side where it is in relation to the general township. And on the right-hand side, you'll see an aerial of the greater 127-acre parcel. We realize that this was a much larger parcel than that was required for a grow and processing facility. So one of our affiliates, Nova Development, took on the onus of master planning the whole development. And what we've really come up with is Nova Business Park. It's a beautiful, secure gated business park development on the south side of North Territorial, like I mentioned. Building number two there is the KETI Grow and Processing Facility. That will be the one that we're discussing today. But we also wanted to show you guys the overall vision for the rest of the site. You know, we see other ancillary marijuana uses coming in, like safety compliance, as well as other RTM uses coming into the park, as well as in the future having our own onsite renewables. We're really committed to having a sustainable grow facility and a light footprint. And, you know, along those lines, that also pertains to how we design and develop the park. So on this slide here, you'll see, we master planned the park around all of the wetlands and natural features that existed to minimize any disruption we would have on the environment as we put together the larger development here for Nova Business Park. That kinda leads us to how we design our facilities. The facility design that you guys will see in our site plan submission is a sealed greenhouse that allows us to get the best of both worlds. You know, we get the, the natural sunlight that the plants really thrive in to come into the structure, but we also seal it so we're able to control the CO2, humidity, temperature and other variables precisely. I'm gonna hand it off to one of my partners, Alex Park, who really is a pioneer for sealed greenhouses in the cannabis space. And he's gonna talk about our existing operations in Boulder, Colorado.
Hi, everyone. As Keish mentioned, my name's Alex Park. I'm the CEO of Vera Cultivation out in Boulder, Colorado. Really excited to embark on this journey with Keish and his team to build what essentially is the second generation of sealed greenhouses in the Vera model. We chose Boulder as our home base in part because of Boulder's emphasis on strict environmental standards and its support for businesses that develop environment, environmentally sustainable business models. Our intent with this development is really to mirror the principles, the standards and the systems that we have in Boulder. So the KETI facility will really be the direct descendant. Just a little bit of out of our company, in the time our company has been operating, we've never had a failed pesticide mold or heavy metal test. We've never had a license infraction by our marijuana enforcement division. So our record of compliance with both testing and any sort of licensing standard so far has been impeccable. And we intend to share all of our operating procedures with the KETI team so that they can immediately implement what has been a successful compliance model here in Boulder. The KETI team is a group of competent manufacturers and we're really excited to embark on this joint venture with them. So I'm gonna hand this back to Keish.
Thanks, Alex. You know, looking at some of the pictures of our existing facility, you'll see it's a very clean, sterile operation. It's high-tech and we really take time in designing the facilities and making it right the first time around. This is a picture of one of the flowering greenhouses without any plants in it. And this is a multiple pictures of the greenhouses once the plants are in flower. This is existing operations today in Boulder, Colorado. And KETI is really meant to be the next generation of facilities after, after and using that as kind of a base model. The main point here is that we've set and designed the facility to be invisible. You know, it's set 1,500 feet back in a secure gated park. There's not gonna be any odor, light pollution. The greenhouse on the top right kinda shows a traditional greenhouse structure. And ours is the one on the bottom that has blackout curtains. They really go on and off to modulate and make sure that there's no light pollution. Where we're gonna have extensive security and CCTVs as well as onsite security guards. And we're adjacent to the highway, so you're not gonna see any traffic or any additional traffic on rural roads. Thank you, guys, for your time, and we look forward to any comments from the public.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keish and Alex. Appreciate it. So Chair, would you like at this time to open it up to the public?
Yes, we will.
So, members of the public, this is a public hearing and we're taking comments specifically related to the conditional use for this medical marijuana, recreational marijuana and processing facility. So please like, raise your hand. Like I said before, when I call on you, you will have three minutes to make a comment. And we would like you to also state your name and address when making a comment. So I had seen someone with their hand raised, but now I do not see anyone with their hand raised. So I think maybe we should pause for a minute or two, because this is a public hearing, just to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak in support or address any issues with the project. I am seeing Raya Dresch, who I believe is actually our next or part of the, the next team. But Raya, do you have a comment on the KETI facility? I don't, I don't think so.
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support that. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We will move on to the next case. I make a motion. We open case JPC 20012 for public hearing.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Iquinto. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Describe the cases to recommend, to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of JPC 200012 Shirley Dresch, vacant Whitmore Lake Road. The applicant is requesting to rezon site property to GC General Commercial. The parcel number is B 0218100022. And with that, I will go to Mr. Lippins.
Thank you, Chair. We do have members of the Dresch family here and possibly other people who may be representing them. But before we open up to them, just wanted to provide a little, a little background on this. This is a case that the township has been working to resolve with the Dresch family for, for some time. But I think the, the background is, back in 1987, the Dresch family petitioned to rezon this property to HC. In reviewing the case, we found township rezoning to AR in 1992. I believe that the township zoning map has consistently said AR since that time. But the assessment records were different and they still said HC. So back when the township eliminated the HC zoning, the HC properties were rezoned to GC. And the Dresch family was not. Their property was not rezoned to GC. And I'm not sure they were even aware that it was rezoned to AR. So we have included the minutes from that 1992 board meeting in the packet so that the Planning Commission can see them. Additionally, the township did not request that the Dresch family pay for this application. I believe the board waived the application fees. But essentially, we didn't wanna we wanted the Dresch family to at least be in charge of saying what they wanted this property to be zoned, so we could see if it complied with the current master plan. I did refer my initial findings of the letter to the prior township attorney and then our current township attorney had time to review the case as well. And we presented it for public hearing tonight to attempt to get resolution to this issue, which I think the Dresch family will be happy to get resolution. My current recommendation is to deny because I, I believe that my findings confirm that the property is zoned AR. And that was one of the main things I wanted our attorney to review is the status of the current zoning of the site. You know, however, if the Dresch family would prefer us to table, we can have that discussion with them. I think that they, you know, deserve the opportunity to present their case to Planning Commission, which is why it's been scheduled public hearing. I know that we did, at their request, reschedule the public hearing one time so they could be here tonight. So that's, that's my, my background. I could talk more about the substance of a rezoning case. But I do wanna give the Dresch, Dresch family an opportunity to speak. I think we have Raya here. And Raya, you could speak. And if there's anyone else in the audience you'd like for me to promote, I'm happy to do so. So, Raya, are you here? Raya, I see your hand raised, but I'm not hearing you speak. I'm gonna look at my chat just to see if I have any questions. I know I had Raya previously asked if she's present over chat. So let me type. I typed a response. Let's see, I'm getting a question here. Raya is having audio problems. So let me see if Linda here is part of her case. Let's see. Says, can you please call the home phone number of Shirley Dresch? 734... I don't know. Chair, would you have any problem with me putting Shirley Dress on my speakerphone?
No, you can do that.
Okay. All right. Okay, so they're watching, so they can hear me. I'm gonna call using my cell phone. And we'll see if we can get their audio just over my cell. I think that would be fine.
Hello?
Hello, this is Paul, the township planner for Northfield Township.
I apologize that my computer's not working correctly.
So I would ask you to mute the audio on your computer and you'll just have to listen via the phone?
I'm working on it.
Okay. I don't know. Chair, can you, could you hear Ms. Dresch on my cellphone? Okay. So I think the audio on my speakerphone will work so you can communicate to Planning Commission when you're ready.
We're just gonna step away from the computer, but okay.
That's always fine. Yep.
All right.
We can.
What I was trying to say on the computer was that I am with my mother-in-law Shirley Dress and we have been working on this for quite some time. I appreciate the documents from 1992 and you are correct. We were completely unaware of that. So we have two questions. The first would be, it's zoned agricultural and we just wanna make sure one of the use for agriculture, that you can build a house on it. So, but it's less than five acres. And at one point, I knew that for an agricultural, you had to have more than five acres. So that's a concern for us. It is on a paved road and does have sewer.
Yep. I think we can address that comment, but do you have, you other things that you would like to share?
That, I mean, that is one issue for us. The other issue is that you guys changed the zoning in 1992. We have continued to pay commercial or highway commercial taxes on that property. And since you guys did the zoning change, we were unaware of it when we saw the tax bill come in and they indicated commercial. We were of the opinion that that was all correct, so we didn't dispute anything at that time. But I, we've got almost 30 years worth of paying a different tax rate on that property and feel that that should be readjusted.
I, I don't, I so I'm not sure that Planning Commission can do anything about that. But, you know, certainly, I, I hear your comment.
So then I guess I would ask if you can advise us who we would need to take that up with, because obviously it is the township to change the zoning.
So tonight, and at the public hearing, we were, we're talking about the zoning, which is really my area of expertise. I'm, I'm not an assessor. But I, I definitely would be happy to field a call with you and, and you know, work on behalf of the township to get that question answered.
That's great. Those are the only two things we're, really, we just wanna resolve it. So we're not, we're not unhappy with the zoning as long as we can build on that. And we would need that question answered before I would say we are prepared to move for the closure.
Okay. So, thank you. You know, at this time, we're doing the public hearing, so we'll hear from the public. But after the public hearing, we will have another discussion. And we'll, we can discuss both the questions you asked the Planning Commission at that time in more detail. Does that make sense, Shirley? Okay, I think our next.
I mean, the only thing I would say is, is for discussion from us, we might need to have a phone call again.
Yeah, so why don't I if, if your presentation in, in advance of the public hearing is, is complete, why don't I just go ahead and hang up and I'll call you back if the Planning Commission has questions following the public hearing?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right, so Chair, should we open it up to the public for comments?
Yes. Yes.
All right, same as before. Any attendees in the audience that would like to speak on the rezoning case, please raise your hand. When you raise your hand, you will have three minutes to speak. And Planning Commission would like to hear from anyone that has, has comments on the case. And I am not seeing anyone with their hand raised again. I think we could leave it open as long as the Chair would like, or we could take a motion to close.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
I have a motion to close, supported by Ms. Fonte. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. That concludes our public hearings. So with that, we will move on to item eight, reports of committees. In the absence of Ms. Chick, there will be no Board of Trustees report. We'll go to ZBA report, Mr. Kuzno.
Oh, I'm on. ZBA has not met since our last meeting. We will meet this coming Monday, apparently. So the 21st, we have a meeting.
Okay, thank you. Staff, anything from staff, Ms. Bird? Mr. Lippins is Ms. Bird. Mr. Lippens, is Ms. Bird available to make any comment?
Ms. Bird is on the call. I don't know if she's having audio issues, or if she's also called in via phone. So. I could certainly try to cover staff items in my report, too. I don't know if there are any.
Okay, we'll move on to your report, Mr. Lippens.
Well, the main thing I wanted to cover is that we have been working to prepare the board agenda this week for placing the recreational and provisioning center conditional uses that Planning Commission had forwarded to the board on their next packet, which is next week on the twenty-second. Just wanted to give a brief statement for public to, and for the applicants, to remind everyone that the board is going to ask the applicants to give ten-minute presentation at the board. But they won't be scheduled for public hearing, so if anyone wants to make a comment on those cases to the board, they would do so during the regularly scheduled call to the public at that meeting coming up next week on Tuesday. Additionally. We do have another case that was filed for expansion to the Aldante Pasta facility on the north side of the community park. And so I anticipate that will be something Planning Commission will see in the coming weeks as well. As well as, as I mentioned, we will have a private road placed on the agenda for the Caddy facility. There may be other other things that I'm, I'm not thinking of right now. But we do have a fair amount of business going on, and we will keep the commission apprised.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Report, Mr. Iquino.
Nothing to report, sir.
Thank you. Downtown Planning Group Report, Ms. Infante.
Has not met, but is meeting on the twenty-third.
Thank you. We'll move on to item nine A, unfinished business. It's, I'll describe the case. It's case JPC one nine zero 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 nine, recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny. Request of Terraferma six four one zero Whitmore Lake Road. The applicant is seeking site plan approval to operate a landscaping business. Parcel numbers are B zero two two nine two zero 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 three. And B zero two two nine two zero 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 four in our zoned LI Limited Industrial District. Before we get into the case, Mr. Lippens, I see your recommendation is to table for ninety days. Am I correct?
I did make a recommendation to table. I do think there are other options tonight. And I would like to hear from the the applicant as part of our discussion.
Okay, and in that case, we'll go to your your review. And then we can hear from the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Chair. In. In my review, so I think to refresh the memory of planning commissioners, we did look at this case last fall. And the, I think some of the major issues that were remaining at that time was looking at stormwater circulation on the, or stormwater processing on the site. As well as the screening of outdoor storage for the conditional use. Which is, outdoor storage is a conditional use in the industrial district. We also rezoned the property to industrial. Since then, you'll see in the revised plan, little bit has changed. The applicant is proposing a larger builder, building, which is potentially actually storing a lot of their operational materials inside. So they no longer need the outdoor conditional use at this time. And, but I have talked with the applicant and the applicant's architect, and they're aware that they could pursue that in the future. I think the objective of the applicant is to really start construction and get the business open soon. So they do want a site plan approval. You know, one of the other issues we've discussed, that we've discussed on some other properties are whether or not the gravel, a gravel circulation system in the rear yard would substantively meet the intent of the ordinance. I know that we would like waiver standards in the zoning ordinance to support that decision, and and we've talked about it with other cases. We haven't at this time added that to the zoning ordinance. So our only option would be essentially for our engineer and, you know, myself from a planning perspective to provide a planning commission with some professional, a professional opinion that this, this, this project does meet substantively meet the intent of the ordinance. If we're not able to provide that, and I don't want to speak for Marcus. I think the the other option would be to either pave the rear yard. Or request that this project go to the, to receive a variance from the CBA. I do think Planning Commission's preferences in this regard are important for us in recommending a path forward for the applicant. I did speak to both the applicant and the architect again today, just to prepare for the meeting tonight. And I know they would like to address Planning Commission. But I would say outside of those kind of major issues that I discussed, this plan's come a long way. I do think that the level of improvements are consistent with the vision for landscape companies in the industrial district. I think that the improvements to the site are well thought through, and particularly with respect to coming up with a practical way to approach stormwater processing on a site. I think this has has done that, and we also have reviews from MDOT approvals for them to drain to the right of way, and some other feedback that has done in terms of due diligence to make sure that it will work. Would you like to hear from Marcus again before the applicant, or would you like to hear from the applicant first?
If that, if that concludes your review, then we'll go to the OHM report by Mr. McNamara. I just want to state for the record, we did receive the Northfield Township Fire Department report with no concerns. So, Mr. McNamara.
Good evening. We issued a plan interview dated September ninth. And had a couple of comments on there that were looking to be addressed. The one I think Cherry just addressed by, we just wanted confirmation from the fire department that the dry hydrant location was acceptable. And apparently it is, so that comment is been addressed. Paul had mentioned the gravel surface. Right now, it's just a conventional, what they have on the plans is all conventional gravel surface. So there are some options there with the the GeoGrid or paving hard surface or the variance route. We did have a note for access to the rear of the site to meet the fire department standards. And then, as Paul mentioned, that they did do a good job with the stormwater. They provided the calculations as required, actually meeting the county ordinance and for the infiltrations. They're, essentially what they're doing is sheet flowing stormwater to the front of the site, and they have infiltration basin built in, I think, quite nicely, really with the landscaping that's that's in front. And then there is an overflow pipe back to the east towards the freeway in the event, in a bigger rain event that couldn't keep, the infiltration couldn't keep up with the rainfall. And they do have the MDOT approval for that as well. The one comment we did have, and this really doesn't change site layout, but we're suggesting that they extend that overflow pipe a little bit further east than they have it now, just to get it clear of their operational area. It might be a little bit challenging with some of the grading, but even if it had to be a there are products out there that you can put in basically at grade with the driveway, which would accomplish that and avoid a concern of washing out that surface. The final comment in our, in our letter was just a reminder that once whether it's tonight or in the future, once they do clear Planning Commission. Start prep, start work on the site. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. We'll go to the applicant, Mr. Lippens.
Thank you. I think I saw a few members of the Terraferma team in the, in the audience. I see James Corf. I'm gonna promote James Corf to panelist. And then I think Denny is on the team. James, should I be promoting Denny as well? Denny Peters? What, oh, wait. Well, James gets his audio on.
I think I've got it, Paul.
There you go. Should I be promoting Denny Peters restock?
Yeah, I think he he's got some important things to add there.
Alright, I'm gonna promote Denny to panelist, and I, I didn't see Eric.
I believe they're sitting in the same office.
Oh, that's correct. Alright, so Denny and Eric will be on the same thing. Is there anyone else from the team here, or with the three?
No. It's just us. You you got, you you covered the conversations that we had, I I think, pretty accurately. There were you know, in the comments, some, you know, what I would consider to be fairly small items that, you know, can very easily be addressed, signage, for example. They don't really have a plan for a sign at this point. We do understand it's a separate permitting process anyway, so we'd have to permit that, you know, successfully through the city anyway, so it's, it doesn't seem like something that would necessarily hold us up. There was a note about storage still on the drawing that was basically something that I have to admit, I forgot to just erase because the storage is now on the interior of the building. The main thing that I think that we probably need to talk about is, is the gravel in the rear of the site, in the rear yard. The issue with this site is that the northern half of it, as you guys know, is, is a easement that Consumers Power essentially controls. That doesn't necessarily mean that we can't do anything with it at all. But it does mean that anything that we do would have to be essentially destroyed each time they want to excavate that gas line that runs east-west through the site. Having seen the excavation last summer, it's twelve feet deep, all the way, it's the full width of the easement itself. And so we are, we are asking for the waiver for the paving requirement, requirement on the rear of the site, just because spending tens, tens of thousands of dollars on asphalt paving that we know for a fact is going to be torn up again next summer, given the conversations that Eric's had with the people that were doing the excavation for Consumers Power, doesn't make any sense. The GeoGrid or an impermeable, or a permeable paver option is going to be, you know, the same scenario. Anything that we do put on there has to be torn up. The client would be essentially, my client would essentially be responsible for all of the costs associated with tearing something up, so. I mean, I want to sum it up by saying, we don't want to spend fifty grand to tear something up in twelve months in order to spend another fifty grand putting asphalt back in. Terraferma, you know, gets paid to put gravel drives in places. It's part of what they do. This is a, you know, this is a gravel drive that is very definitely up, up to the township standards, two levels. I've got it on the drawing. There's a cross-section. It's a, it's a Class B gravel road, according to the ordinance. Also, I know that some people would have an objection to the gravel drives in the back of the site, just visually. Everything is surrounded by a ten-foot-high wood fence, and everything outside the fence is, you know, basically a postcard for what Terraferma actually does, so it's, it's landscaped very thoroughly. You know, the other, the other issue here is that, you know, that Marcus, I think, raises that we were trying to, to come up with a drainage program that didn't overburden, and didn't, you know, rely on approvals from MDOT along Highway twenty-three that didn't require, you know, huge retention basins for a lot of reasons, one of them environmental. And it just seems like not entirely unreasonable to ask that we stick with a gravel drive in the back where no one sees it. And that maintains our, you know, our engineering standard.
Thank you, James. I don't know if we want to hear from Eric or Denny.
I would expect they would want to say something.
I know, I definitely wanted to address you guys. We can hear you.
Oh, okay. I appreciate the opportunity tonight. Of course, I think the last time I spoke with everybody, it was a different world that we were living in, so. I just want to basically reiterate in recap a lot of the things Jim Corf just said, the head architect of the project. And the subcontractor that Consumers Energy brought in last summer. And, of course, I think, I don't know if all you gentlemen know, we're talking about a thirty-six inch gas main, so we're not talking about a small lateral, huge gas main through the property. What they had said at that time, June or July of twenty twenty-one, they are gonna do an inspection. So we have a lot of pictures of what they did summer of nineteen. And it was an extreme construction excavation, and Jim did note it was twelve feet deep. In fact, as I go to the property and look at it, we are still getting some settling. And thank God, it is gravel, because we're very familiar with GeoGrid systems. Of course, we're registered landscape architects. We are very familiar with asphalt and proper base installation. And using either one of those construction methods with something on that deep of a dig not only isn't practical, its latest information we got from consumer is highly, highly discouraged. And then, of course, not to mention every two to three years, having them come in and do this deep excavation would result in just an exorbitant amount of money. And during my due diligence period, even before I purchased the property here on Whitmore Lake Road, of course, I met with people at Northfield Township and Vidia who works, you know, for same firm McKenna. And at that point in time, Vidia said, well, basically, you just better leave that property the way it is. Because essentially, you own it, but it's kind of like it's Consumers Energy's property. So the, the, to think that we would try to do anything on that property that resulted in a capital expense that would be destroyed on a every-other-year basis with what they are entitled to do would be foolhardy. And I think you gentlemen would agree.
Thank you, Eric.
At this time, Mr. Lippens, I'd like to move to the commissioners' comments and questions.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any commissioners have questions or comments? Any commissioners have questions or comments? Mr. Zarzaki.
Yes, I agree with them as far as the issue of disturbance of the property by consumers. The same line they're talking about crosses 600 feet of my property. And I actually have one of the test heads at the very beginning off of Helena Road there. A 200 by 200 square area. They don't necessarily dig up around me, but they do come through. With their grinders and everything else and wipe out the forests as they do a lot of the survey work by aerial. But when they do the excavations, having been in construction myself. When you go down 12 feet, it takes five years for that soil to resettle back into its natural state. So if they're disturbing it every couple of years, it's going to really never, never completely settle properly. Not unless they use only rock, which they're not going to, I know, consumers. So the fact that this is in the back of the property, I think this would be an opportune area to remain gravel at this point. And I'll let the other commissioners. Give their comments.
I saw Mr. Kuznul raise his hand. And then we'll go to Mr. Dwyer after. Mr. Kuznul. You're muted.
Yep, there I am. Excuse me. I'm flipping back and forth between the meeting and the site plan itself on my computer here, but. This may be an obvious thing to me, but there's nothing that says proposed building on here. You've got this blocked out thing on a few different pages, but it never says proposed building. Is there a proposed building on this site?
Yeah, of course, it's, it's the, it's the large blocked out shaded in structure that was, I shaded it dark, so it would highlight it, so.
Yeah, but everything else is labeled existing, 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 but nothing says proposed. So that seems kind of odd that nobody would make that commentary.
Sure.
And then. I guess I'm not, there's, there's a single gas line that goes across there right now? Is that what was happening?
Yeah, it runs east, west on the north, uh, north half of the site.
And, and they. They've done test holes already on your property right now that you're, that you know of for sure?
Last summer, when we were sort of in the planning process, they came out and they don't just dig a test hole, they dig a trench, the full length of the line. So, and I actually sent Paul a picture of it earlier today. It's, it's a 12-foot-deep trench that runs all the way north, south, almost up to the, almost up to the right of way, all the way to the back of the site. It's a huge excavation.
Okay, so I guess I'd ask myself, why would you want to put your gravel parking lot there? Why wouldn't you find a different place to put your parking lot? Because if they're gonna do that, do you gravel park now? That's gonna be an expense to you to deal with anyway, so it doesn't make. A whole lot of sense to me either. I don't, I have no problem with gravel.
Right.
As a whole for a yard, that's a great idea. You guys are landscapers, blah, 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 but.
Right.
You know, if you're concerned about cost, doesn't think a real, real great idea to put it there, even though you're, I know you're limited on site space, but.
Right. Consistent maintenance of a gravel yard right there for parking is, is really something that's sort of. Well within TerraFirma's wheelhouse. So keeping that updated on a regular basis is really simple for them. And locating it elsewhere really caused a lot of difficulties as far as. You know, grading the site and making water move out of the space in between the two buildings. It was much easier to pull it up to the top. Also, you know, the, the number of parking spots that are shown there are, you know, the calculation based on the zoning ordinance. And I, I would suspect that 90% of the time that parking lot is going to be less than half filled. So it's really almost an overflow parking area for us that's required, so we're showing it and it will be used. Don't, no question about it. But it's, oh, I think you lost me maybe. Oh, there you go. There's the excavation. So, yeah, that kind of. That creates a bit of a problem.
The fence, the fence we're seeing there is that, what is that? Is that?
The western most part of the site.
Western, so that's along Whitmore.
Yes, so you're seeing Whitmore Lake beyond that fence right there.
And so you're, you're telling us that, that Consumers Energy plans to do this every two or three years across your property?
That's, that's what they told us.
That seems very odd. Most things are buried, they stay there for a long time and they don't, they don't, they don't get uncovered. I mean, I understand they have inspections.
Right.
And they probably even have ways to inspect it internally, I'm guessing, but. I imagine this is kind of a once every. Step, you know, I don't know.
I don't, I don't disagree with you that that logically makes sense. I, I, I don't purport to. And exactly the testing.
Yeah, I would like to add something. To the conversation, if you gentlemen can hear me.
Sure.
I guess, from what I understand from the excavating company. That was under Consumers Energy control last year. What predicates the excavation. Summer of 2021 is because it is all new gas line. And then subsequent years after that, it's not going to be a complete end-to-end excavation. From what I understand, it's going to be excavation at 50-foot intervals. So with that in mind, I mean, it's still going to be pretty invasive, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great picture. It's helpful. I don't necessarily understand that logic. This seems odd. Anyway, again, the problem with the gravel, I think you should label your building proposed. I mean, I understand, I'm, I'm an engineer. I understand the drawing says, should, it shows that, but it doesn't tell everybody that, so it's kind of interesting that. Never labeled that.
I would agree.
That's it for now. Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you. Few points. I think back to what this property was like before TerraFirma moved in. And it's already a huge improvement on what was there. And it's improving as we speak. As for the gravel. They've got asphalt up to the. Privacy fence, which is a closed wooden fence. The type of business really ought to be operated on gravel, because to operate loaders and trucks is going to be. Heavy-duty asphalt, and if you don't do that, you've got to maintain it and there's, there's nothing worse than. Bad asphalt, because then you've got potholes and it crumbles and it just becomes worse than gravel. So you're better off with gravel. And you pile on top of that the consumers' problem, even if. Even if there was no plan next year or for five years to do any work in that pipeline, I certainly wouldn't be one to invest a lot of money. Without any control over what was going to happen on that site, so. Given all of that, if there was ever a case for a waiver for gravel instead of asphalt, I don't know a more deserving case than this. I would note, though, your existing greenhouse doesn't exist. That's a barn. And your plan should properly reflect that.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Before I ask Mr. Iquinto or Ms. Infante, I have a question. I'll take my turn to the applicant. What are these excavations planned for? Can he, can he get remedial about it? What is consumers or their subcontractor doing these excavations for?
You hear me?
Danny, are you?
Yep. So I, I was speaking with the foreman. That consumer sent out to supervise their subcontractor. And they said that the criteria that they had to replace the line didn't. Allow them to replace more than 30 feet that they replaced. And that he's looked at me and said, we're going to be coming back here next year. We're not able to do from where we ended to the highway. Because it goes 30 feet deep. Not 12. I guess it goes 30 feet deep under the highway because frost can get pushed down. And they were informing me that. That they will most likely, now this was just his professional opinion, this is all I can tell that he does. He goes, we're gonna be back here to dig that up. Another conversation was done with Eric and the, the subcontractor himself. And he started talking about going west. And, and so today. Jim, our architect, was in contact with Consumers Real Estate Division. And, you know, I think Jim can give you guys the letter, but verbally, they were like, yeah, we're, we reserve the right to come in. And what my logic is or another engineer's logic doesn't matter. It's what consumers' logic is. Me, to me, I would have replaced the whole thing. From Whitmore Lake Road to the 23, but, you know, they have different logic. And they also, in our easement agreement. It's 115 foot wide and they have the right to add another pipeline and. That was alluded to, that if this pipe didn't meet certain criteria, it would be more economical for them to put another pipe alongside it, parallel. And, and then just leave the old one in its place. So we don't want to do anything permanent. Whether that permanent means five years or two years, because I believe they're just going to come in. When they dug it up last time, they, they, they were about 120 feet wide with their debris. And the trash, so. Wasn't a clean. And I had to fight with them to even get it backfilled. I, I do excavations. I am a licensed builder. You don't backfill with the crap that they were backfilling with. But they were doing it. I would be fired.
Not, not to get off topic, I have another question for you. Were you aware of all this when you purchased the property?
I wasn't aware that they were gonna dig it up on any regular basis. My family owns property in Livingston County with pipelines through it and they've not dug it up since the 50s. But it's another company. We, we probably wouldn't have bought this property if we had gone through what we're going through.
Thank you. I, I have a, I have a comment directed towards Mr. Lippens. Mr. Lippens, if, if we knew this was the situation from the onset of this application process. Why wasn't the applicant guided to get a variance from the ZBA? My basic, my basic issue with this whole thing is it is not the planning commission's purview. To grant a variance of the standards in the ordinance. We are to look at and review site plans according to the standard. So what we're doing here is bypassing the zoning board of appeals, which is the right entity. To grant the variance that these gentlemen are looking for. Really, all, all of this information is neither here nor there. What it means to a planning commissioner is their site plan does not meet the, meet the specifications of our ordinance, plain and simple. So what I'm saying is, I guess I'm suggesting. These gentlemen get a variance from the zoning board of appeals and we can carry on from there, but to ask it at the planning commission level, I, I believe is incorrect.
Larry, I, I think you've hit the nail on the head on certainly one of the big issues here. I think that the. So let me kind of take it in, in chunks, right? I think we've discussed a little bit about the easement. And, you know, not only the likelihood that maintenance will be required in the future, but we have examples of recent maintenance that was done that was provided by the applicant. I, I do believe that a variance could be supported for a number of reasons, but I think the easement in and of itself is a unique characteristic of this site. And I do believe that that. You know, that a recommendation for variance could be supported. And so I concur with the chair's assessment on, on that issue. As to. You know, whether or not. Strict compliance with the zoning ordinance could be achieved on the site. I think that it could be achieved. Is, does it make any sense? I don't think it makes any sense to say, hey, pave over here if it's going to be dug up next year. But. Could it be done? I think it could. And, you know, I have reviewed the easement language that consumer holds on the site. And it does forbid the placement of structures. But I don't, I don't see in that easement language anything that specifically references paving. Again, just because the easement doesn't recommend paving or doesn't preclude paving, doesn't mean that. Consumers. Might make a claim that, that they would have an approval authority over paving or something like that. So I do know Mr. Corf has been in touch with consumers. And they're, I, I think, willing to provide a letter saying they don't want any paving on this site. We don't have that yet. But I think there's another issue. That does involve. Planning commission's ability to interpret the ordinance and determine substantive conformance. Which is not granting a variance, but it's balancing multiple interests in the site and determining. How it relates to the master plan and planning commission is charged to. Approve site plans and. So I think the, the variance issue is something that Chair, you, you are right. You could, one of the options tonight would be to say. We're fine. We feel like the things that are left on the site plan can be handled administratively. And we'd entertain a motion to approve, subject to this being presented to the ZBA. So that's one option. I think the other option, which I mentioned, would be just a determination of substantive conformance with the ordinance. And a professional recommendation from myself and, and Marcus to that effect. And here's one of the things kind of I would explain to planning commission that supports that approach. One of the things that I look at for variances is, is the relief here best given by a variance? Or is this issue would potentially best handled by a text amendment and in fact changing the zoning ordinance? And I know that planning commission has discussed. Waivers on multiple properties for. Gravel surfaces. And I think that, you know, my recommendation as to whether or not this issue is unique to this property. I, 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 I think it could deserve a variance, but I think it would be better served by an ordinance amendment. And I. I, I think that. Through both our work on the master plan, as well as conversations we've had about the zoning ordinance, I feel like. Probably every planning commissioner would agree that having that on the books would be better. I mean, we've talked about this. With People's Express, we talked about it with the Community Development Center. There are lots of developments that are experiencing this issue and for stormwater management. A gravel surface could be approved. Or an improvement, certainly.
Mr. Lippens, may I interject?
You may.
That's a lot of information. My point being is that this applicant should not be held hostage due to. A text amendment change to the ordinance that you are wishing to get.
I'm not suggesting that they should be. I'm suggesting the opposite.
Solution should have been from the onset was for these applicants to get a variance. My point is this, again, the planning commission is not the entity to grant variances, whether it be. Through a site plan review or not. We are, we are making sure, ensuring the applicant meets the specs of the ordinance, plain and simple. All the other stuff means nothing. It, it may be that you want an alternative system added to the ordinance. That's not what we have. We're, we're going by black and white right here, so. I don't know which way you want to play it. I understand that you, and I also have two other commissioners I want to get to. But my point is, I, I hear what you're saying, but I disagree the way it's being approached.
I, I, and I don't disagree with. I, I, and I don't disagree with your statement that a variance is, is a solution. And it would be a, a good solution that would resolve this whole conversation. I don't think it's the only solution, so I think if there are other planning commissioners that have comments, um, we can hear from them as well.
And one, one more thing, though, is, is where we get is that, um, we're, we're taking liberties that we don't have as a planning commission, and that shouldn't be happening. For, as far as the township is concerned. Litigation purposes or otherwise, that, that's not, that's not the way it should function, and that's just my last comment. But I want to go to Mr. Aquino or Ms. Infante.
Thank you. I, I agree with Larry's wholehearted statement. In fact, that was what I was waiting to go ahead and share, was ask. Why wasn't this applicant just directed? To ask for a variance immediately, it could have been dealt with by now. And back to us. And we could have then. Viewed all of this. With the understanding that there was a variance in hand for this applicant. I am with Larry a hundred percent, it is not, if we keep allowing. Situations like this, we keep setting precedence where we're, are. Changing the ordinance per site. We are down a very slippery slope. And it is not our purview to do that. It should have been out there for a variance, first thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Infante.
Yes, thank you. So, I think we can all agree, this is the type of business we definitely want in our community. And like Commissioner Dwyer said, it's already been an improvement. Um, as I was trying to wrap my mind around the problems that I was looking at, and I've had a lot of experience with eminent domain in my life, um. I wonder a little bit about the language of the easement a, agreement, because it would seem to me. I mean, I was imagining some sort of disturbance to the property that might, I don't know. Require some sort of compensation, but that's, the photograph was a little more than I expected. Um, and so I guess that's, that swayed me a bit, I, I do understand Paul's option one. Um, because they weren't directed to ZBA, so they didn't get that opportunity. And that's what we're facing. We do have a problem with precedent, and we can't set precedent. On, that needs to be held to every applicant successive. And I don't know if this is a unique situation, as Paul says, I'm a big fan of, of one, but. Option two, and the issue of precedent concerns me deeply, so. I don't know that I helped any. Um, I will defer to the other commissioners who know a lot more about this than I do.
I saw Mr. Kuzno had, uh, one more, uh, question, go ahead, Mr. Kuzno.
I just was, I'm looking back at the agenda here, and it says that this is under unfinished business. Has this been before us before as a planning commission or not?
Yes.
Yes, it has.
So, and, and was this not an issue back then or not? I guess, so did we, did we not pick up on that ourselves as a commissioner, as a commission ourselves?
Good point.
That's just a general question, I'm sorry, dude, I'm just curious.
Mr. Lippens?
When, when, when was, when was this before us? And why didn't we bring it up back then?
That, that information, though, is included in the packet, Mr. Kuzno's, um. November of, of twenty nineteen. If you have that.
Sure I do, I'm just asking a question, so I don't have to read through everything on there.
Okay, then, then we have to go to, that's why I refer the question, Mr. Lippens.
Yeah, so I have a, a letter here from November thirteenth. That says a variance for the gravel parking area is obtained. As one of my recommendations, um. So, you know, I think that there are, so. I agree with planning commission, I am not recommending that you grant a variance with your authority. I don't believe that's what I'm asking you to do. Uh, what I'm saying is you have the option of interpreting when substantive compliance of the ordinance is achieved. And it's, it's not a black and white issue. Um, it's, it's not. But, it is entirely reasonable, and, um. Uh, certainly within planning commission's authority to say, we want. The ZBA to make this determination, we feel like this falls outside of our authority. And I agree with the chair on that case. I think my point is that, um, there are other objectives in the township. Not the least of which is, are the environmental goals. And the environmental requirements of, of the township. And with respect to precedents, um, we have been dealing with this on other cases. Um, so, uh, you know. My. When I talk to planning commission about what your role is in interpreting the ordinance, interpreting the goals of the master plan. And determining substantive conformance. I do not want you to go beyond your purview at all. And I agree with the chair that a variance would be probably the best thing in this case, and because of the iss- issue with the easement. I think it could be obtained. I do not think it's the only option, and I think there are other cases where we have dealt with this. And determined that administrative approval, uh, with an engineering opinion is okay. I don't think that those have worked out very well, which is why I do think we should make a text amendment. Um, and I know probably other, the commissioners probably would agree with me. But what we have now, right now, with respect to Eric and, uh, the terra firma proposal is. Um, a business owner that has exerted a, a, a lot of, uh, financial expense and time to comply with the ordinance. And we've got a good plan here. Um, we have a good plan, and we also have extenuating services, not the, or, you know, circumstances, not the least of which is. Operating during a pandemic, um, and I don't know if the applicant has even spoken to. Why it took them between November of last year, when we first heard their case. Until August of this year to submit revisions. Um, but they have submitted revisions, and there's the same sense of urgency for getting their approvals as there was last November. And, you know, so my goal is to advise you of what, what is possible. And then for planning commission to ask for your, your professional staff to provide you with that advice on what your actions can be. That's my role as a planner, is to say, if you take an action, can it be supported by the ordinance? Can it be supported by your master plan? That's it. That's what I'm trying to help with. Uh, but to answer the question of could have, is a variance a good step? I one hundred percent agree with the chair that that would be a good step. It's not the only option, I mean, you might want to ask the applicant what they would prefer, how they would prefer to handle it. I, I, I know from talking with the applicant today that my recommendation to table is not their preferred option. So we might want to hear from them to see if a variance would be better than tabling.
I, I would like to direct the applicant as to which way to go. At this point, Mr. Lippens, here's.
Thank you, sure.
Here's a question, is there a commissioner here tonight that would make a motion? That the planning commission determine if this is doable or not? I for one, I'm not. No other commissioners?
No, sir.
Okay, so, I would think, um. Mr. Lippens, how long would it take the applicant to obtain a variance in this case?
Well, as, as, uh, Commissioner Kusno, uh, stated, the next meeting is, is actually next week, so I think it. Probably is too late to prepare something for their packet, and I don't want to commit. The ZBA to hearing this case without, uh, talking to the chair or, uh, anything about, you know, their packet. So I think we would be waiting till November, or ask, pardon me, October. Um, or we would have to request a special meeting of the ZBA. Um, Brad might be able to handle that in terms of how their cases are handled. Um, but I do think if you, if you would, if you feel the other issues can be resolved this evening. Um, making a recommendation to approve, subject to a ZBA variance, is something that we have done in the past.
I, I understand what we've done in the past, Mr. Lippens, we're going from your recommendation, you, you have a recommendation to table the site plan for ninety days.
Can I add something, Paul?
Not, not yet, sir, hold on, we, I'll, I'll get to you in a minute. We have, we have issues on the recommendation, you have items on your recommendation, and we have, uh, conditions on the OHM report, am I correct? Is, that's the reason for the ninety day table of the site plan. And I'm certain they could get a, a ZBA variance within that timeframe.
You are correct, I, I believe that it, uh, variance could be handled within that timeframe. I think that, that is, um. The basis for me giving a ninety day timeframe.
On, okay, that, so that, that, to me, is the, is the best option at this point, but I, I'll go to, uh, Mr., is, uh. The applicant, is it Dennis, Danny?
Danny or Eric, there.
Oh, this, this is Eric Patterson, uh, the owner, okay. Uh, from what I understand, okay, Paul said there was an option presented. To, uh, planning commission that would negate having to go through the variance process. Okay, and it looks like you gentlemen basically shut it down tonight. Okay, am I correct?
So, I, Chair, would you like to field that?
No, go ahead.
It can, I don't know, can you, I don't know, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, Eric, I can, I can hear you, just.
So, basically, recapping what Paul said, okay. There's been other circumstances in the township. Where you guys had granted approval on other projects, okay, within the planning commission. Okay, similar to this. Okay. And he gave a couple examples. Okay. We've been in business many, many decades, we're gonna be a very huge tax base for the township. We're approaching bad weather, I need to get this project going. Okay. And I know you can say, well. I don't care, because that's just the way it is. Okay. But if we, you know, enter in logic and common sense, okay, Paul is saying there is another avenue. Besides going through the variance process, I mean, bad weather is upon us, gentlemen.
To the applicant, we heard that in November also. That was the same, that was the same comment from you in November about the weather. So, here's also a shortcoming on the applicant's part, you saw that one of the conditions was to obtain a very, a ZBA variance, am I not correct?
Now we, now we do.
No, it was in the original paperwork from November, we all have copy of it.
Okay, then I missed it.
So, that is not the planning commission's issue for, for items that you did not see or foresee.
Yeah.
One of you gentlemen claimed to be a building, a, a building contractor, residential builder, am I correct?
I am. Yeah, we both, ours is not, this is not unheard of, am I correct?
No.
Thank you. Applicants anymore, unless another commissioner has a question, but Mr. Lippens, I want to expedite this applicant's process. There's not a commissioner here that's going to make a motion that the commission decides on the, on the surface, so. You're, uh, the best suggestion I could see is that a motion to table this until they get the variance and address their shortcomings on their site plan. And have it revisited, am I correct?
Well, I, I, I. I think there are two options, so. Chair, uh, you are correct, um. And, um. You, so you could table, or you, you could make a motion to approve pending, or, you know, uh, subject to a variance. I know that you previously asked if anyone was willing to make a motion to approve. Um, with, uh, which I interpreted to mean, um. With, uh, finding substantive conformance for the gravel lot. No planning commissioner indicated they were willing to make that motion. I don't know if you asked if anyone was willing to make a motion to approve subject to ZBA approval. Um, but I do agree one hundred percent. Uh, tabling, uh, with that instructions is an option if there's a planning commission that wants to make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Aquinto.
I make a motion to table case nine A.
You want to put a time?
To get all the items addressed per discussion and per the letters of recommendation.
I'm sorry, Mr. Aquinto, you're, you're, uh, you froze up and I lost volume also, can you repeat your motion?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to table case nine A, case JPC one nine zero 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 nine. Giving the applicant time to address the items of discussion tonight and the. Recommendations that need to be dealt with by our planner and engineer.
Your support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Infante, any questions, comments on the motion? Seeing that we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Mr. Kuzno. No. Mr. Dryer.
Yes.
Mr. Aquinto.
Yes.
Ms. Infante.
Yes.
Mr. Roman.
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Passes. Five to one.
Thank you, Mr. Zarzaki, uh, to the applicants. Obviously, um. It's a procedural issue. It's not a guarantee that the planning commission did a previous, uh, site plan review, and it happened that it automatically applies to you. Uh, that's the exact reason why the ZBA is in existence, to determine these things. So, unfortunately, it affects your, your process, but I think it's going to be easily resolved. And I would hope that you contact Mr. Lippens and get it expedited, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chair, and I would just say to, uh, Mr. Korf and Mr. Peterson, I have to talk with you tomorrow and, um. See what we can do about, uh, getting you on the next, uh, ZBA meeting and back, back for planning commission, so. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll go to, um, the next order of business. I lost my agenda. I have it. Which would be, uh, unfinished business, uh, nine B. Uh, recommend approve, approval conditions. Or deny the request of People's Express one seven five Barker to amend the site plan, parcel number B zero two zero six four zero zero, 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 one. And it's on GC Journal Commercial. Mr. Lippens.
Thank you, Chair, uh, working right now to, um. Um, find, uh. Doug in the attendees, Mr. Doug Anderson, um. Doug, I'm gonna promote you to panelist, and, um, I'll start by kind of walking through. Um, the case, so. Um. This is a case where, uh, we had a planning commission approval. Um, in, uh. We did meet with, uh, Mr. Anderson and, and, um. You know, back in January, um. Essentially what happened is, uh, you know, I'll summarize, and I certainly, Mr. Anderson can provide additional details, but. Um, they had a, a site plan approval, um, and when. Uh, Mr. Anderson contacted the Washoug County Road, or the Washoug County Water Resource Division. Um, they suggested another approach to site, uh, development, uh, which would. Would, should have, and did require the applicant to amend the site plan and bring it back to planning commission for approval. Uh, however, uh, I think in, in good, you know, through no fault to Mr. Anderson, I think he didn't understand that process. And went to address the comments from the. Um, Water Resource Department in installation without seeking a planning commission approval. Uh, which is unad- unadvisable, uh, but, um. You know, uh. you know, uh, when uh, Mr. McNamara and the zoning administrator went to inspect, they discovered construction had happened uh, in a way that was not reflective of the approved site plan. Uh, so essentially, there's two options. One, uh, we ask the applicant to conform to the approved site plan. The other would be to do a site plan amendment uh, based on the as-built and to see how the as-built conforms with the zoning ordinance standards. Um, we reviewed, uh, one version of that as-built plan in January and found it to be substantially deficient. Uh, since then, uh, Mr. Anderson has obtained a license professional to prepare the plan that you have this evening. Um, the plan is reflective of the as-built condition on the site. Uh, it, a survey was conducted and we do have assigned, um, site plan this evening. Um, and, uh, we are recommending approval of that site plan. We do believe it substantively conforms with the amend, the zoning ordinance. Uh, the one recommendation that we have, which was discussed, uh, back in the first approval of this site, um, that, uh, quarterly inspections are provided to make sure that the site's being properly maintained by the township engineer, um, and, uh, we're recommending that those inspections be paid for, um, either through escrow or on a case-by-case basis. You have Marcus's review letter in the packet and Doug is here tonight. Um, I'm certainly here for questions, uh, from planning commissioners as well.
Thank you. We'll go to, uh, Mr. McNamara's always jumping for.
Evening again. Um, so our report was brief. Essentially, uh, the way we approached this, I think Paul summarized it. Um, we compared the submittal, um, against the existing site conditions to ensure that it was accurate, accurately reflecting the work that had been done, um, which, based on our review, this plan does. And as we noted in there that, oh, may still be planning or zoning ordinance issues out there, um, but what I can tell you is the plan that you have accurately reflects the work that was done. So, if, um, and, you know, and that, and I think that would be if that plan were to be approved, then that's what we would utilize for the quarterly inspections to ensure that it stays, um, consistent with that plan. So, that's all I had there.
Thank you. Any other planning commissioners? Oh, excuse me, um, we can go to the applicant if they'd like to make comment.
Mr. Anderson, I'm going to unmute you so that you can speak to Planning Commission. Uh, working on it. There, there we go. I think you're unmuted. Uh, Mr. Anderson, can you speak?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, sir. All right, we can hear you.
Well, I'm glad to see everybody's here again after the rough summer and spring we had. Uh, so that part's all good. I'm still here. Uh, we, uh, I, I did, uh, get ahold of, uh, one of the uh, architects that the, uh, uh, the county and township had on their list. I talked with them. Uh, he was ready to, you know, gung ho and go right at it and take care of it. And, uh, he didn't think there was going to be a big problem. He liked what I, what he seen, but that's when COVID hit. Everybody sort of went out. His firm went out. And that's why, uh, it's been a little while since I've been able to talk to you. Uh, but then he, uh, they came back into work and they started on ours. Ours was the first one up. And, uh, they, they worked, uh, pretty hard with, uh, Paul on, uh, on our new plan, which does reflect everything that we did. Uh, and all the things that the, the drain and the, the water commission, uh, said we would have to work around, uh, including, you know, uh, I, I made that one fence that, uh, we could take down within a half hour. So, that was all good for them. And, uh, and that's it. So, I hope we submitted, uh, something that, uh, we can all live with. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, any commissioners? Questions, comments? Motion?
I rec, I'll make a motion, sir.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve case JP JPC 200001 for approve the site plan as presented with the conditions under McNamara's, uh, McKenna's report for quarterly evaluations on the parking lot.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Mr. Dwyer. Any questions, comments on that motion? I do have a comment. Uh, we, we went through the gambit again with the, with the parking, uh, issue on this particular site from the beginning. At that time, the planning commission voted, uh, or there could, the, uh, majority vote was that they'd be allowed to have what they have. So, so this is to actually look at what they have as, as an amended site plan. So, just so it's clear. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Infante, am I seen? No?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll do the roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki?
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dreyer?
Yes.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Six approved.
Thank you, Mr. Zarzaki. Takes us to item 10A, new business.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, ladies.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
So, item 10A is, uh, case JPC 200 014 to recommend to approve, approved with conditions or deny the request of KETI LLC vacant East North Territorial Road for conditional use for a recreational grow permit, medical grow permit and processor permit. Of all the parcel numbers that we previously mentioned at the public hearing and zone RTM Research Technology Manufacturing District. So, with that, uh, we'll go to Mr. Lippens for his review.
Thank you, Chair. Um, we have reviewed, uh, the proposal for, uh, grow facility and, um, processing facility, uh, for a conditional use. And we are recommending, uh, approval. Conditions of approval, uh, we are recommending, um, that is the site plan letter, uh, recommending the conditions of approval, um, similar to those that we have, findings that we have stated in, in the approval recommendations for, um, the other marijuana conditional uses, but I do want to note that this site is not, uh, for retail or provisioning, uh, center. Um, it's for the grow operation. Uh, and we do not have, um, uh, we do not have any other open conditional use applications for any grow facilities, uh, medical or recreational. Uh, we also do not have any other, um, pending conditional use applications for provisioning center or, uh, processing facilities. And I would say the township also still has, uh, permits above and beyond what are being requested by KETI for this site. Um, nonetheless, we, we are recommending that, uh, findings be stated about how this application has addressed, uh, planning commissions, um, merit-based criteria, which we feel like they have, uh, addressed. Um, and I think that documenting a decision, uh, to affirm, uh, conditional use criteria are met for, uh, KETI with, um, with findings. Also, it will be, uh, useful, uh, should we receive any additional applications for those uses. So, I'm recommending a consistent application of the marijuana facility process for this application, even though there are no other applications, uh, pending. Um, that being said, um, one of the conditions to approval, uh, we would recommend, um, that a satisfactory, um, you know, all, all site plan issues are, are addressed. Uh, we do, we do feel like, uh, there are issues to address in the site plan, which is a next case. Uh, we would recommend tabling the site plan, um, just, uh, for, uh, uh, planning commissions, um, you know, little, little background. I did reach out to the manager to see if there was any reason why we would want to rush this case to improve it, uh, to include it on the board's agenda next week. And we are, we are not doing that. Um, so, uh, we do have time, um, to address those, uh, remaining site plan comments with the applicant even before the board could hear, uh, this case. So, I think, you know, potentially, um, we could be working with KETI on revisions to their site plan, uh, for the first or even second planning commission meeting in October and have all those things, uh, addressed prior to the board hearing the conditional use. Um, that being said, I don't see any reason why you couldn't take action on the conditional use tonight and table the site plan. It's what you've done in, in other cases. So, um, I know KETI is still here. Uh, we still have Keishon and Alex as members of the panel. Uh, so if you have questions for them, uh, you can ask, uh, them questions as well.
Yes, Mr. Lippens, I'd like to give the applicant a few minutes to, um, generally talk about their, um, the conditional use, be not so much details about the site plan, about an overall, uh, anything else that they would like to talk about that they didn't address during the public hearing.
Thank you. This is Keish talking here. Can you guys hear me all right? Okay, I see some light. So, um, you know, we just wanted to reiterate from our original presentation that we spend a lot of time in site selection, making sure that we find a site and a facility, um, design and a home for this facility that would not be intruding on any neighbors. It would be harmonious to the areas and surroundings. And we're very happy to have DT Utility as our neighbor. They have the electric substation that we'll be tapping into. We have sewer at the road. We're spending a lot of time with our design professionals on making sure that we're adhering to all of the ordinances and requirements by the township as well as Washtenaw County. We received the latest review letters on Monday and our team's already working on incorporating the feedback and changes that Paul and Marcus and the rest of the team from your guys' end have recommended for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any commissioners having any questions or comments regarding the conditional use?
Uh, real quick, I'm just reading the very last, uh, comment in, in Paul's letter here. The applicant's requesting five recreational grow permits and two medical grow permits and two processor permits. That's all in that one facility? Is that what I'm to understand?
Correct.
And how does, how does that work? How does it work when you're limited to a certain number of plants per, per? Is it, is it per permit or per facility? How's, how does that work? I guess we never, we never even asked that question before, did we?
Yeah, it's, it's, they, it's referred to as stacking, right? Um, so, you know, basically, they'll be required to get multiple licenses from the state and, uh, the township hasn't precluded, um, that in, in our permitting ordinance or zoning ordinance as well. Um, so, yeah, the facility will be designed for multiple permits. Um, I have asked Keish if their intent is to be the operator for all permits. Uh, essentially, you know, what I want to prevent is, is, you know, creating, uh, a facility that will kind of be a rental space for multiple permits and, um, you know, Keish has assured me that this is his plan to operate the entire business and obtain all the permits and you'll see from reviewing his materials, um, and that's the case. So, it's a, it's a big facility. Um, it's an ambitious, an ambitious plan. Um, and, um, and, yeah, so those are the permits they're requesting for it.
Okay.
I think I would, just to, to make a candid comment, uh, I would have, you know, more concerns about whether they could develop this permit from an equity standpoint if we had 10 other applicants seeking permits, but we don't. Um, we've got now one applicant that has, you know, seriously invested in the conditional use pro, process for, uh, for grow facility and processing facility. Um, and I think it's a viable application. So, I, I don't take any issue with, um, approving a conditional use for this many permits on the site. Given the scale they're putting in the roads, um, the site can certainly support the use based on the improvements we're seeing.
Well, he indicated that the, the, uh, the business park would be potentially other marijuana facilities in there as well. And that was my understanding anyway. So, you're, you're kind of, uh, creating a park that has very limited other uses in there. If you're taking up seven of the 12 available permits, I guess, but, uh, is the, I understand too that is, is that, that permit is a renewable, it's a renewable conditional use each year, isn't that correct? Or something, there's some sort of a, the, uh, the fee associated with each, each permit is an annual basis, isn't that correct too?
Yeah, so the, um, the conditional use approval runs with the land. Um, however, the way we set up our standards, if the, if the licenses expire and are not resumed or the, um, use is abandoned, the conditional use will also be abandoned as part of the, um, approval requirements and standards in the zoning ordinance. And that standard is also placed on the site plan, uh, just for, for record. Um, you know, that, so that use is, is a one-time thing. We're proving that use. If they want to in the future expand, they would have to again receive another can, uh, conditional use. So, we're only looking at the conditional uses that are presented in the application tonight. Any expansion would also require a new permit. Um,
Okay.
And, but annually, the, the township will require an annual, um, marijuana facility permit to be, uh, granted for, for all of the marijuana facilities. Um, and this one would, would need a permit for each of those licenses or each of those permits annually.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Paul, could I put a point of clarification out there?
Yes, thank you, Keish. I don't know if I misstated the, the phasing of your project when I was.
No, no, that's perfect. What, what we meant about ancillary marijuana uses in the park, or you'll see there's going to be a need for secure transportation, which is another license type that's offered by the township. There's no applications in for that as well as for safety compliance, which is like a testing lab to actually test the product. And so, we're hoping to do is having such a large grow and processing facility there will attract some of these ancillary users to come in to some of the other buildings in the park and then go through this process with you guys individually.
Good, thank you.
Any other, any other commissioners with the comment or question? Ms. Infante?
No, sir, thank you.
Just wanted to verify. Um, seeing none, I'll make motion for the Planning Commission to recommend the Township Board approve the conditional use subject to conditions on a McKenna review and/or the Planning Commission review for case JPC 200 for case JPC 200014 and defer the matter of precedence to the township board.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Infante. Any questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, we have to do roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki?
Mr. Coosnow?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Mr. Aquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Approved six with one abstained due to absence.
Thank you. So for the next new businesses, Kate, the case JPC 200014 and it's for the the same is to recommend approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of Keddy LLC for a site plan approval for recreational growth permit, medical growth permit, processor permit, same parcel numbers, zoned RTM, research, technology, manufacturing district. Mr. Lippens, before we get into a long dialogue on, on a site plan, just as before with the other facilities, the planning commission tabled without, or tabled until the applicant received the approval from the board of trustees on the conditional use or conditional use with the conditions. So I, I would suggest that we do the same tonight, although I know Mr. McNamara may be standing by and the applicant may have liked to discuss their, their site plan. I think we should address it at one time. I would hope that's the planning commissioner's view also. But I can find out by making a motion. So I would like to make the motion for the planning commission to table the site plan recommendation until the applicant receives conditional use approval with conditions from the township board for case JPC 200014.
All right.
Supported by Mr. Aquinol. Any questions, comments on that?
Chair, I would make one comment. Does, you know, want to say that you have in your packet tonight, our first site plan review on this project. And I think it's, you know, the, the materials submitted by Keddie on this are evidence of, of how, how much due diligence they've done. I think tabling is the right thing. And I do think we'll have time to work with them on on getting, you know, the, the site plan issues addressed. So I think it's a good, good motion and just wanted to confirm. I think we're in a good place with this applicant.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll go to roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki?
Mr. Coosnow?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer? Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Passes six, zero with the one up station due to absence.
Thank you, Mr. Zarzaki. And we'll go to the next case, which is new business C case JPC 200012 to recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of Shirley dress vacant Whitmore Lake Road. The applicant is requesting rezone the site property to GC general commercial, commercial. The parcel number is B 0218100022. With that, we'll go to Mr. Lippens for a review.
Thank you, Chair. I think you, you have my review, which is a recommendation to deny. But I, I really think that what we're doing is confirming the zoning of the site to be AR and resolving any discrepancy related to the 1987 rezoning to HC. I know the applicant, you know, and I, I do feel like the, the reasons to support a rezoning to AR are stated in some detail in, in my letter and I'm happy to address questions. Or to my reasons to support a denial and confirm the, the zoning is AR are stated. I did hear that, you know, from the applicant, that the AR option is an option that meets their you know, hopes for the zoning on the site. They had an issue that they questioned about the site assessment, which I think is most appropriately referred to the township assessor. And I would happily, you know, for my part, work to facilitate a conversation with the manager to get those questions answered. I think the other question that was raised was about the site being under five acres. I think that that is a question to, that I'd like to speak with the zoning administrator about to see how other dimensional issues like that have been handled. But certainly with a minimum lot size in a district, I think that a variance is, is supported, can be supported from a dimensional variance as a uniqueness of the property, generally speaking. So you know, but that's an option to to look at as well for use of the site as an AR property. And, you know, I'm certainly happy to work with the applicant to get any zoning questions related to what our regulations are in the AR district answered as, as well. So we, we do still have the drafts, I believe, present, although I told them I'd call them back for questions. So I think that I can do that. But if there are any other questions for the, for me, I can address those, or if you'd like me to give the applicants a call and how to do that too.
I would like to, for you to, to get the applicant for their, you know, for their portion of this discussion. I see Mr. Aquinol had his hand up.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So with this being smaller than five acres, when they do want to put a home on the site, they're going to have to go for variance to the ZBA. Is that correct? Muted, Paul. You're muted.
I think he's muted because he's making.
Sorry, Sam, I heard you. I was actually speaking with the applicant here. So I do have the drafts on, on the line. Just to confirm, you can, you can, Shirley, can you hear me and?
Yes, we can hear you.
Planning Commission, can you hear Shirley on my cell phone?
Yes.
Okay. So Sam, apologies. You were asking me a question as I was dialing.
I, I wasn't aware of that. I'll, I'll re-ask it. My concern with having the zoned ag and not having it zoned the way that classification they have thought it's been, has been commercial. And it being smaller than five acres, if and when they go to build a home on the property, are they going to have to go in front of the ZBA for a variance?
As I said, they, they may, they may. And I would normally confer with the zoning administrator to see how variations in, in dimensional requirements have been handled in the past. But things like a property being you know, not big enough for a lot requirement is something that is a dimensional variance. And a dimensional variance like that is probably likely to be approved. But I don't even know if it would be required without looking at that aspect of the case, which I haven't done. So to, to be honest, I, I would really need to look at the issues with the property, including lot size and all, all those issues to fully answer the question. Sam?
So I'm just sharing this with the other planning commissioners. I have a deep concern of having this zoned AR and then creating additional work when I don't think that's the right zoning for it. And that it should be, if it was zoned, if the applicant considered it was zone commercial and they understood that because you don't need five acres to do a development with commercial or put in a business. You know, we're, we're creating additional work by having this zoned and where they may not be able to ever do anything because the ZBA may not ever grant a variance for it. I, I don't know. I can't answer that. So it's confusing to me to have to push this to be AR and to create a lot that is non-conforming.
Well, Sam, so I think that's a great point. And I guess the clarification that I can provide tonight is that what, what my letter confirmed and what the minutes in your packet confirms is that the site is zoned AR. So if it is zoned AR and it's non-conforming, it, there's a whole we, there's some, some things that we would have to look into to see how we would look at a non-conforming site. Particularly a site that's not conforming to a dimensional standard. And I, I think your other question about kind of, you know, whether or not you would be creating additional requirements or things that the applicants would have to deal with on this. I, you know, I, I would say I, I think what we're doing is, is trying to resolve an issue that the applicants asked us to resolve as well.
But isn't that wrong of the township to zone it AR when they, when they should have looked at it and not, and understood it wasn't conforming size? So it should have never been switched to AR?
You know, Sam, we're looking back at something a township board did in 1992. And the only thing we have to look at is the minutes. It's very hard for us to think about, you know, what they should have, should have done or even know what they did or didn't do. I know that the dress were, were, were the owners of the site back then. They probably would have the, the best recollection of, of their interactions with prior boards. But what I will say is that we now have, you know, several master plans and several zoning ordinances that have been adopted with AR standards. And I, I doubt that this is the only site that may be non-conforming to the AR standards in the entire township. So dealing with non-conformities is, is really a separate issue. And, but it's one that I would gladly help the applicant with to answer those questions.
Mr. Dryer?
Can I interject something?
So I, I do have the drafts online and I think it's Shirley asking to make a statement.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. Mr. Dryer, we'll come back to your question.
So Shirley, I think they're ready for you to speak.
So I actually appreciate what Sam said because those were the exact thoughts I was having. So I would actually request that perhaps you table the final decision on this until we can determine if we would be able to use the property. Because I think in 1992, and by the way, we have no recollection at all of anything going on in 1992. But it seems like the township put us, I mean, we had a commercially highway commercially zoned property. And it seems like the township put us in a position where we can't use our own property at all without us being aware of it. And I'm not saying that that's the township's fault, that we weren't present at that 92 meeting. I, I can't tell you what happened 30 years ago. However, I do feel like it might change our, our request. Maybe we want to go with the single family residence as, as our zoning based on what we learned. So for us, we would like to wait until and perhaps change what it is we're asking for based on what we've learned.
Thank you, Shirley. I think, I think I heard you. I, I wouldn't have any objection to tabling this. I do think, you know, practically speaking, holding the public hearing tonight is a big step forward in the process. And I do think that we would have the opportunity now that we've held the public hearing to circle back with the applicant and make sure that the existing zoning of AR is actually an improvement to what they would like to, you know, as the desired use for the property. You know, we could also explore options for rezoning to, you know, potentially a zoning category that's not GC, although I think AR is, you know, probably good, but you know, open to pursuing a different course with the applicant if, if that's their, their preference as well.
Couldn't the applicant respond to that? Is that their desire?
Yeah, Shirley, I think you asked the table and I think the chair is just giving you, saying, you know, confirm that that's what you want us to do.
That, that is what we would like so that we can investigate further. We just learned about the AR zoning documentation in the last week.
Very, very good. Thank you. Mr. Dryer, do you have, you had a question I saw?
Yeah, I'm just looking at my tax bill and it says residential. So I've got a lot of sympathy for these people that twice a year they've been told that their zoning is something other than what it was. They had every right to believe that they had value in this as a commercial property. And then to be told, no, you don't. Oh, and by the way, it's too small to put a house on in a clearly residential area. And I think finding a way that they are able to put a single family house through a variance through the ZBA or some whatever mechanism is required is the just outcome to this, notwithstanding that they might be owed an awful lot of back taxes that they've overpaid. So I, I think tabling is the correct thing to do until they can find out whether or not they're likely to be given a variance or there's some other mechanism that allows them to put a home on this property, which really has no other use.
Yeah. Yes, and, and they do have other options if you, in looking at Mr. Lippens review on, on the property. So based on the, the land use map, so they do have some options and it sounds like the applicant would like to address some more of that with the, Mr. Lippens. And if he, you know, if he's willing to do that, I'll make motion that we table this case. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, support by Mr. Aquinto. Any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, we'll do roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki?
Mr. Coosnow?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Passes six, one abstained due to absence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. I'm going to hang up the phone, but I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Paul.
Moving on, we go to item 11, approval. I make a motion, we approve the preceding minutes from August 26, 2020, which is a special meeting and September 2nd. The regular meeting and dispensed. Supported by Mr. Aquinol. Any questions, comments or corrections on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? None opposed. I'll go to final call to public, Mr. Lippens.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we will open it up for comments from the public. You, if you would like to speak or address planning commission, please raise your hand. We would offer you three minutes to address anything on your mind, hopefully related to planning commission responsibilities. I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand tonight, though. So I'm, I don't think we have any comments, Chair.
Thank you. We'll go to comments from commissioners. Ms. Infante?
Yes, thank you. My only comment is that I think the drafts should still have their future application fees waived, given that they're in a situation where they need to pursue the variance and obviously back taxes. And this was no error of any of us, nevertheless, as a courtesy, just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coosnow?
No comment. Thanks.
Mr. Aquinto?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I also would recommend that their ZBA fees be waived. And I would recommend that they would request that because it's up to them to do so. And the additional comment I have is that this was a very big packet. And to have one day as a planning commissioner to review it is just not acceptable. And I don't know about the rest of the gentleman, but I received this yesterday evening. I had a I have many commitments like everyone else and I work all day. And I, as one commissioner, do not want this happening again. But we say this over and over and over. But we say this over and over and over and it continues to happen. Mr. Chair, I would like you to reinforce that, that if we are not able to get our packet on Friday, that the meeting be canceled. Because it is improper to expect us to do a very diligent review on all of this. To drive to those sites, to review them, because that is our responsibility as well. And to try and do that in one day. It is unexcusable for that to happen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aquinol. Mr. Zarzaki?
No additional comments, thank you.
Mr. Dyer?
Nothing, thank you.
I, I agree with Mr. Aquinol. Tonight's meeting still would have happened due to a public hearing. We have still at least had the public hearings because those were noticed. Many of the cases had issues to work out. So I agree though, I, I think if it's clear to, to Mr. Lippens that, that if, if we don't get their information out by Friday. It's very difficult to, to expect commissioners to, to keep up with this. So I think that'd be our, our plan going forward.
I, I agree, Chair, and I know it's not my time, but can I make a comment? Just, just say I certainly understand the. How it's challenging for commissioners to remove, view materials and I am working, you know, both with the chair as well as Mary. To make sure that we get things out prior as you expect. We're going to continue to work to make that happen. I know we've been particularly stressed by the, the number of applications that we have. And I, I thank you for your patience, but I definitely agree it's our responsibility to get your packet on time. And I'm going to keep working to make sure that happens. And I know the chair has been working extremely hard on that as well, so I thank him for his efforts as well.
Thank you. So with that, we'll go to announce the next regular meeting of October seventh, twenty twenty, and I make motion to adjourn. Or by Ms. Infante, all in favor indicate by saying aye. I say, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.